We'll come to order at 7:02. Our chairperson is stuck in traffic and he will be here shortly, so we may jump a little around on the agenda to make sure he gets to vote on things. We wouldn't want him to be able to get sidelined. Would you join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask everybody to remain standing? We should have a moment of silence tonight for those folks that died and were wounded and such in Paris. Mr. Dunham is going to lead us in the prayer tonight.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services to make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office; that is our responsibility. Especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you. Announcements. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. There are openings on several committees. Please contact the selectman's office for a listing and an application. Donations to the food pantry can be made to the Council on Aging or the public library, and this is an especially needy time of the year, so please consider doing that. Okay, down to the agenda. A review of the agenda. Is there anyone that has any objections to the items on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. I will move on. We have a public comment period at the beginning of each meeting, usually related to the agenda items. It'll be a 10-minute total period, three minutes per person. Anybody that would like to speak at this time to the public comment period? Can you come up, Mr. -- yep, and just --
I know you said the word "usually."
No, this is -- we -- that was the beginning when we started the comment period, at the beginning and the end. There were people that if we just had the comment period at the end and we had voted on something, then somebody doesn't have input into what we were going to vote. So that's why we came to a comment period before and after.
Okay. Dan Foran, 20 Brook Street, North Carver.
Could you speak into the mic, Louie Moore, please?
Is that working?
Hello?
Yep, yep, good.
Dan Foran, 20 Brook Street, North Carver. I just want to go on record that I have a farm in North Carver. I've done everything that the towns asked of me, the states asked of me, and then some. I jump through hoops. I do jumping jacks and stand on my head and spit nickels for a right-to-farm community. I have a binder here that says exactly what I can do on my property. And I'd like to let the selectmen know that the animal control officer in this town feels that it's not appropriate for the hunters of this community to hang deer in their yard after hunting and harvesting an animal. Decided to call the police department on me for hanging a deer in my front yard. That there's a large number of hunters in this town that have maintained that practice for a very long time. Upon not receiving the information she would have liked to receive from the police department, she went to the Board of Health Agent and attempted to address it with him. And he -- I wasn't there for the conversation, but he told me he concurred with the police department. Upon not receiving information she wanted to receive from him, she decided to discuss with him the sale of livestock on my property that I post online for sale. She brought up that she doesn't feel -- she's concerned with the numbers of livestock on my --
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we're getting a little too personalized right now?
No, no, we're not getting too personalized right now. And you interrupted me. You could have asked --
I did. I said, "Excuse me, Mr. Chairman," and he's running the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not the chairman.
You're not running the meeting. He's the chairman.
Yeah, I'm a citizen in town.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but we got to run the meeting, and one person needs to speak at a time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're getting a little too personalized when we're making accusations against a town employee. And I do understand the police were called today due to a threatening situation, that I want to be very sensitive to the concerns of that employee. I was with the police chief when this occurred, and if Mr. Foran has some concerns, I would ask him to refrain from being too specific and making accusations on individuals. If he has a concern, we can take a look into it, but to stand here and start accusing people when they're not here to defend themselves is not appropriate.
Okay. Can you stick to your outlining the problem that you're concerned with?
Does that count towards my three minutes, or do I get that time back? Now that we're here, and I'd like to address another issue. The little green posters that Mr. Milonowski advocated for to go inside the town hall. It's a two-way street that when, as citizens in this town, we're expected to abide by those regulations, but when other people that are town employees don't --
Can you --
When other employees don't --
Refer to the regulations, but don't refer to people, okay? Keep going. You can talk about what you want.
When staff in the town don't follow those same guidelines in general, I think it should be a two-way street and it should be addressed. Again, back to the original issue, making it difficult to address. A town employee, I think, stepped out of bounds by addressing personal issues with a town, another town employee, and trying to get some sort of judicial change. She -- it was attempted last night at the agricultural committee meeting to put some sort of number on the livestock based on the numbers that I have, and I think it's inappropriate that, again, a personal issue was addressed. Very short notice. The rest of the community had a very vague outline of what the numbers on the livestock was in reference to. I had approximately 24 hours to realize what was going on and let other people know that this limitation was going to be put on people based on a town employee's personal issues.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Good.
Since this is a serious issue with allegations, do you think it would make sense that Mike will follow up and that we get a resulting answer and then put it onto the agenda if necessary, if not, like, behind closed doors with that employee? Because this is not even on our agenda, and this is an employee issue.
We --
I think it would be a conflict of interest for the employee that you just named to be the person in charge of that. I'd ask that another employee be involved in that discussion as well, maybe a selectman or a selectwoman.
Okay, Dan, really, we're getting into an issue here that we really ought to have on the agenda, and we don't. So that's what Helen is pointing out. We need to --
Right. She asked me if Mike should look into it and come back with an answer. I asked if somebody from the selectmen board can be involved in that as well.
I think the Board of Selectmen would prefer to direct the town administrator into checking into it, and then we can put it on the agenda if need be for our next meeting, so that we're going to be legal, so that if somebody who's involved in the accusation can be here to defend themselves if necessary, or if we need to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Uh, Mr. Dunham.
Anything, if a particular employee is being named or singled out, I would say it would have to go into executive session.
And they also get 48 hours' notice and the right to representation, and this person is not getting that right now.
Right, so we have to be careful on that.
So my last request would be that a select person would get back to me with any potential putting it on the agenda, please.
We will do that.
Great.
Somebody from our board or the town administrator, all right?
And in reference to the threatening conversation, I haven't had my day to address that either with the police chief, which I'll do tomorrow morning with a recorded conversation that I think some people would be very surprised to hear the language in that conversation.
All right, fine. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to have some comments at this time? Bill?
Bill Duggan, 285 Meadow Street. I've been thinking about the vote that you folks were taking on, the spending of $200,000 for the foundation work before the vote was taken.
Yes.
And everybody was very reluctant, even Michael, to bring it up and risk and all. I had dinner with a friend of mine. I've known him for years. He's a mason. And so I, in the course of the dinner, I started thinking about this, and I asked him about pouring concrete in the wintertime. And he said that there's really no problem with doing that. The contractor would probably not pour if it was sub-zero temperatures and stuff, but generally, winter temperatures, if they've got the insulation blankets, as Michael pointed out, and put them over the footings, that when the concrete is curing, it generates its own heat and would not require, you know, heaters and that type of thing. So I just -- is this just from the For Whatever It's Worth Department?
From --
Just a bit of information. If I had it the other night, I would have said something, but I, you know, this was just last week when I heard it, so.
Okay.
And he said even if they had to buy the blankets, which I'm sure if it's a big enough company that would have them, it'd be like maybe $50,000, as I figure he threw out without knowing the footage of the footage. But it was just something that was kind of cranking in my mind to bring up.
Thank you.
To save maybe $200,000.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, we're all about trying to save money.
Is there anyone else who would like to do some -- a comment here, a public comment? Okay, we completed that portion of our agenda. Next, the first active item is Tax Relief Study Committee applicants. And what's your pleasure, folks?
I make a motion to approve Madeline Joyce and Nancy Ryan after they come up and introduce themselves and say why they want to be on the Tax Classification Study Committee.
Very good. Ladies?
Tax relief.
Come right up.
Emerge, emerging topics.
We -- sure, we want you to come up and your --
Yeah, we don't have that committee yet.
And for the TV network, maybe introduce yourself and where you live, and then you can tell us about your interests.
Okay. My name is Madeline Joyce. I live at 170 High Street here in Carver. I'm interested in saving the taxpayers a few dollars and hopefully to help out in this committee as much as possible.
Very good.
Nancy Ryan, 180 Tremont Street. I concur with what Madeline said. I want to join for pretty much the same reasons.
Well, that was very simple, but to the point. Okay. What's your pleasure, folks? Oh, you already made the motion.
I did.
Did anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just very happy to see you both volunteer for this committee because it is important, and it's good to see people stepping forward.
Anybody else? Okay, ready for vote? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
It's four, zero, four.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, could I say something really quick on the adopted nursing home? It's definitely set up for December 20th.
Excellent.
To go to Golden Living, and I'm thinking probably about 4:30.
Is that -- that's a Sunday?
Is that for the singing?
Yeah, I was going to say, is that for the sing-along, or is that for the dropping the --
That's for the sing-along at the nursing home.
And that's Sunday?
Sunday. I know there's a football, yeah.
No, 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 that's a good day to sing Christmas carols.
Yeah.
Other than Christmas, sure.
Absolutely, 4:30.
4:30.
Oh, game will be over by then.
Well, that's what I thought, so everybody can come.
So we're going to Golden Living this year?
We're going to Golden Living.
Yeah, it's nice to switch it around.
Yeah, I feel that way, too, yeah, so.
Very nice.
She's very excited, the activity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is tax classification hearing, and I invite one of our -- we got one assessor and the department.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Do we really want to do this without --
I was going to say --
-- without the chairman being here?
Would you like --
I would hate for him --
It's on to the chairman, and he said that was perfectly fine with him.
Of course it was.
To hold it up.
No, no, we're going to have the tax classification --
But I'd rather have him be here to vote it.
Well, he should be back by the time we get done with it.
Okay.
I know Ellen has a lengthy presentation.
So does that mean that he will vote when he gets here? We're going to hold up the assessors for that? Nope? Onward and upward? Okay, welcome up.
Speak slowly so we can wait for the chairman to get here.
And again, folks, just for the -- there's so many folks out there that don't know us, all of us, so you can give us your name.
Mike Paddock, Chairman, Board of Assessors.
Ellen Lanchard, Director of Assessing.
And before you go in there, for those who don't know, there are copies of the presentation that Ellen is about to give on that table down there if you need a copy.
Well, distinguished board, ladies and gentlemen, it doesn't seem like it's been a year, but apparently it has been.
I can't believe it's here already.
We've missed you all so much. The tax classification hearing is obviously a very popular event. We're sorry about that. But a very necessary one as we work out our split tax rate that we have in this town at the time, and not every town does have one. I just want to, I want to just take one minute and just say, I'm really glad that we have the Board of Assessors that we have, the people who are working to oversee the assessing department, and I'm really thankful for the people we have working in the assessing department as it is a department that functions well, in my opinion. I think we're doing really good here. We have won awards in public service. Our Director of Assessing is now the President of the Mass Association of Assessors. We certainly have a knowledgeable staff, and we're known for being helpful and friendly in a situation where some people might think it's deserving of combat pay. So I'm going to hand this over to Ellen, and she's going to take us for the ride through the hearing. You guys have the handouts, and there you go.
Thank you, Mike. I apologize ahead of time for this being such a lengthy process, but it is for us, too, so. There are, just an FYI, because Mike mentioned that we have a split tax rate. We are one of 110 towns and cities in the Commonwealth that do have a split tax rate.
Ellen, the rest, the 140 or something?
240.
240 have one single rate?
Have a single tax rate or a uniform tax rate, yes. The problem is, we've had a split rate in this town for 34 years. It's very, very difficult to reverse that, extremely so. And, you know, even other towns that have only split the tax rate 10% or 110%, it's taking them four to five years and longer to get back to a single tax rate. So it's a very difficult thing because people get accustomed to a certain amount of taxes in there that they have to pay every year, and when you go to a single rate after having shifted it as much as we have, the impact would be tremendous on the residential properties.
Ellen, how many of those 110 are cities versus towns?
I didn't calculate that, but I have the list. Not with me.
We're really trying to stall. That works. What a question to put her on the spot with.
You said you weren't going to do that. So every year, the Board of Selectmen must hold a hearing to consider the tax rate options available to the town under property tax classification. The hearing is held after the assessors have determined final values, classified all properties, and reported this information to the DOR. And just FYI, all our valuations, new growth, and everything except for the tax rate has been approved. The values that we have set the parameters for the options the town may adopt. So what we're doing tonight is providing the Board of Selectmen with the information necessary to make your classification decisions. The information that we will give to you should show the impact on the tax rate of the tax policy options. The assessors are not required to make recommendations, although they may choose to do so, and Mr. Paddock will address that at the end. To start with, and this is not so much for the Board of Selectmen, but for the edification of anyone who is watching, the budget and the levy are the two major factors in determining the tax rate. The total budget is voted on by the registered voters at the annual town meeting as well as special town meetings. Estimated revenues, such as motor vehicle excise, fees, licenses, permits, penalties, and interest, as well as some recurring items that are outside the scope of what is usual, are deducted from the total budget. The remaining amount to be raised is the levy. So the levy specifically is the revenue the town raises through real and personal property taxes each fiscal year when it sets the tax rate. The property tax levy is usually the largest source of revenue cities and towns have to fund their annual budget. For FY '16, the total budget is 41 million, well, 41.7 million. Now, some of these numbers may change because of rounding specifically. Estimated receipts are 19. almost 9 million, leaving the tax levy at 21.9 million. The tax levy is then distributed among the different classes of properties. Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 2A, small b, states that assessors must classify all real property within their jurisdiction into four classes: residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. Our four, well, we actually have five major classes because we also include personal property as we are required to. The residential portion of the property classes represents 81.24% of the total value. The commercial, industrial, and personal properties consist of 18.76% of the total value. And you can see the total valuation is 1 billion, 166,398,540. The levy limit is the maximum amount the town can levy in a given year. The FY '15 levy limit is added to, well, to the FY '15 levy limit is added 2.5%, which is the prop 2.5 concern. Then new growth is added, any debt exclusion is then added, and that gives us our levy limit for the year. In this instance, we have the listed under the uniform tax rate calculations, we have the levy limit. This was prepared ahead of the, all of the numbers being certified. That is the actual number of the levy. Total valuation, that is also the actual valuation, total valuation. And so the levy divided by the valuation gives us a uniform tax rate of $18.78. Now, if you were to take the residential share of the levy, which is the 81.24%, and multiply it times 21,894.29, you'd get 17,795.790. Dividing that by the total residential valuation still gives you the 18.78. We then do the same thing with the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. Their share of the levy is 18.76%, or $4,109,175. Their total valuation is $218,805,897. So the levy divided by the CIP, their portion of, or their share of the levy divided by their valuation, the CIP valuation, gives you the same tax rate of 18.78. This is the part where the Board of Selectmen have to take note. You need to vote on a single or a split tax rate. The open space discount is nonexistent because we do not have any open space properties, a residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption. The next page shows the average value of a single-family home is $267,400. That's a rounded figure. Times the uniform tax rate of 18.78, the taxes would be $5,021.77. And please note, I'm not including the CPA in any of this. If you were to shift the tax rate 130% to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, that would lower the residential tax rate to 17.47, and the taxes on that same average single-family home would be $4,671.48. If you vote to shift the tax rate 140% to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, it would give the residential tax rate, it would become $17.04, and the taxes would then be $4,556.50. And going to the maximum, which is 150% that this town can shift, this would lower the residential rate to 16.61. With the same average value, the taxes would then be $4,441.51. Going to the next page, the same with the commercial taxes. The average commercial value is 368.600, a rounded figure to the nearest hundred. At the uniform tax rate of 18.78, the taxes would be $6,922.31. Excuse me, one minute. I'm sorry. If we were to shift to the commercial, industrial, personal property classes, 130%, their tax rate would rise to $24.41. Their taxes would then increase to $8,997.53 for that average commercial value. I'm sorry. It's dry in here. Shifting the tax rate to 140% would, thank you, the tax rate then becomes $26.29. At the average commercial value, the total taxes would be $9,690.49. And again, going to the maximum that the town of Carver is permitted to use is 150%, that would increase the CIP tax rate to $28.16. And at the average commercial value, we would have taxes for that property at $10,300. value, we would have taxes for that property at 10,379.78. So, when you do shift the tax rate, the levy percentage changes. So, the residential percentage of the levy for the residential properties is 81.2409. If you shift the tax rate to 130 percent, the, the total value that is to be taxed for the residential becomes 75.6132 percent. 140 percent shift, the residential valuation portion becomes 73.7373 percent. And if you shift to 150 percent, the residential total of the levy to be raised by taxes is 71.8613 percent, which, if you multiply the levy times those percentages, you will get the new residential share of the levy. And the residential tax rates for 130, as a reminder, 17.47 at 130 percent, 17.04 at 140 percent, and 16.61 at 150 percent. So, for the levy share for CIP, there are a couple of ways of doing it. One is, the DOR gives you a spreadsheet that spells it out for you. The other is to take the levy, subtract the new residential share of the levy, which gives you the CIP share of the levy, and divide that by the CIP value, and you get, at 130 percent, 24.41 for the tax rate for the CIP classes. At 140 percent, it becomes 26.29, and 150 percent, it becomes 28.16. As I said, the open space discount, there's an explanation of it, but there is no land classified as open-spaced in the Town of Carver. So, there, you will not need to vote on that. The residential exemption shifts the tax burden within the residential class from lower-valued properties to higher-valued properties. The amount of the tax levy paid by the class remains the same. So, what does this mean? This means that the lower-valued properties, of which they're, from the, the average value of all residential properties, which is actually a little bit lower than the average single-family home, there are about 1,800 properties that could see a reduction in their taxes. However, there's then about 1,740 properties that would see the income because, the increase because where the lower ones, lower-valued properties are getting a reduction, it still has to be made up within that class. So, the more valuable or higher-valued homes will have to pick up the extra money. It really comes down to pitting neighbor against neighbor. You know, you could have one person on one side of the street having, being able to qualify as a lower-valued property, and people all around them having to pick up that extra money because their, their values were, bless you, were higher.
I'm allergic to high taxes.
Yeah. That's good, because taxes can be very boring, and I apologize for that. There, you know, there's only a very few cities and towns, and mostly cities, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Somerville, Waltham, Watertown, and then a couple of Cape and Island towns, Barnstable, Nantucket, and Tisbury, where you have multimillion-dollar valued homes. We don't have that here. Everybody's within a specific range, fairly similar. So, that is all about residential exemptions. The next page just is the procedure for how we calculate it. The following page shows you the impact to the properties that would be impacted in a positive way, but I did not show you the ones that would be impacted negatively, which would be the higher-valued homes. So, I think we can just skip over that and go on to the small commercial exemption. And the Mass Department of Workforce Development provides information to every assessor's office in the, in the Commonwealth, outlining the eligible businesses that have been certified. They have to have a value of less than a million dollars, not a problem in Carver. They have to have an employee force of a 10 or less. And as it turns out, we only have 10 small businesses that would qualify out of about 100. So, the small business owners, they have to own the property too, would pay lower taxes, and they would be shifting the remainder of their levy to the other commercial and industrial taxpayers. It's a, it's a very similar to that residential exemption. And there is an explanation of it on the next page. And at this point, I will turn it back to Mr. Paddock. Is my dad here?
Excuse me, before you start, Mike, if you don't mind, excuse me, through Mr. Chair. There's only 10 businesses that qualify for the small commercial exemption?
That's correct, and that's because they have to own the building and the business.
Okay, that's why.
And, and a lot of these are in-home businesses, most of ours are in-home businesses.
Got it. That's the question right there, thank you.
And agricultural businesses, such as mine, while they don't add up to 10 full-time employees, there's a point where I may have 18 people working for me for six weeks. So, it, a business, agricultural businesses are kind of qual, are disqualified by their, the timing of the, the employment needs.
Could I, could I interrupt too with one question? Ellen, you said that there, we don't have any open space properties?
Listed specifically as open space. We do have lots of open space in Carver. However, it's typically on land.
You mean categorized as open space by, by the Department of Revenue?
Most of our, our, our open-space land is classified as chapter.
Okay, so, what about something like, you know, even though it belongs to the Town of Carver, say the coal property, if that belonged to an, a family?
But it's not taxable.
Right.
But if it belonged to a single family that, or to anybody, or even, as long as it had a residential use.
So, so it would get classified?
Be the residential tax rate.
As a residential?
As, as opposed to being a commercial property.
Okay, because that would be considered it's use, highest and best use, or?
Well, highest and best use does play into it, yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify, because I, we do have a lot of open space, both protected and unprotected. So, I just wanted to understand the nuance of what?
Well, the open space is also some, a decision that's made by the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
But since most of, almost all of our open space, if you will, is chapter land, or town-owned, like the Cedar Swamp, or the portions that are town-owned.
And just for the?
Or the state forest.
For the public, chapter land is land protected by the state, it kept in agriculture, and therefore its taxes are lower?
Yes.
No, I'm just clarifying for the public.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Paddock?
We have a full complement.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, welcome.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and finish this?
But we are going to allow you to vote.
Thank you.
Since I've been here, it's, it's been the position of the Board of Assessors that it would be best if we could bring our tax shift closer to a, to, to one, but it's not likely to happen, and I haven't seen that happen here. We've argued over this over many different directions. We've argued it from, we want to invite, you know, bigger and, and better businesses to our town, but with a 140 shift, it's difficult to find businesses who are willing to swallow that. We've come, kind of come full circle around to say, there isn't a lot of room for business. Our biggest business here is Shaw's Supermarket right now, and it's not likely we'll attract enough long-term, big business here that's going to make a significant impact on our tax rates. But it seems to me, as we've made that circle, we've come back to say then, what we do have is, is a, a lot of smaller businesses. And the businesses that we have in our town are mostly family businesses, and we're shifting a significant amount of the tax burden on them with, with the current tax shift we have at 40 percent. We'd love to see that change, but it's not likely we're going to see it change anytime soon. So, our recommendation this year, in light of all that's before the town at the moment, is that we don't change it. We keep the shift at 140, and we look for another time to, to bring this down and make our town more attractive to businesses, and maybe lessen some of the burden that's on some of our business people in town. Furthermore, our recommendations are not to adopt an open space discount for the reasons that we're just enumerated, not to adopt the small commercial exemption because it affects such a small class of businesses in town, and, and not to adopt the residential exemption because it really isn't right for our town. So, those are the recommendations of the Board of Assessors. You guys may vote and choose as you will, but we thank you for your time and your patience with us.
Comments?
In terms of the small commercial exemption, could you elaborate a little bit more in terms of the businesses that would be impacted? Last, last year, you kind of gave, like, whether it was just stayed steady with the values or whatever, and?
Well, I'm, I can't actually tell you who the businesses are because it, it's not public information. We do have the list.
But there's only 10?
There's only 10 that qualify.
For that small exemption?
Yes.
And the shift would be for the remainder of, how many were there, 12? How many other businesses would be impacted if you could tell by the number?
About 100.
100, so the shift would be?
But most of these are in-home businesses, or they are renters, they're renting from somebody else, and some are tax-exempt. Some of them are cranberry growers, but they're not in chapter?
How many of those are not in chapter? Why wouldn't they be?
The reason, or the reason that some growers would not be in chapter is that you give up certain rights to your property when you do that. I became aware that even my property, I thought it was merely when you changed, if you changed its use, but if you, if you merely take it out of chapter, you give the town the option to purchase the property, and for some, that's a risk they don't want to take. So, you do give up some risks, you do, yeah, you take on some risks when you step into the chapter world.
Got it, thank you.
There's only a handful of, of growers that are not in chapter. The, other, there are some growers who are in, who are in chapter and who have, they have significant holdings, as opposed to the, you know, the small growers, but, and a lot of them are single, you know, are owner, owner proprietors who are the only employee.
So, if I understand the commercial piece, and I think just to summarize this, for the small commercial exemption is the tax base would stay within that classification, where you have approximately 100 businesses, 12 may apply to this. In order to apply, they would have to have less than 10 employees. They would receive potentially a 10 percent reduction in value, but the other 90 percent would have to pay for their reduction.
Right.
So, it, it just moves money between large and small commercial entities, provided they, they meet the, the criteria here.
That's correct.
Okay, anybody else have any comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Vice Chair. If we go with the 140, that leaves the, the residential at 17.04, thereabouts, right? Now, that's the exact same as for now, what, three years in a row, we maintain that?
Essentially, it's, it was 17.01 in FY14 and 15, and seven, 3 cents more for FY16.
Okay. So, basically, if a person's property did not change in valuation, they would not see a change in their property taxes. However, if their land was, had now had a higher valuation, even though the tax rate is the same, they will see an increase in their property taxes?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's fully up on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Ready to make a motion?
I recommend that we adopt the Board of Assessors' recommendations.
Do we have to vote on each one of these separately, or can we vote them all at once?
You can vote them all at once, unless somebody wants to separate them.
I prefer to separate it just because of the residential tax exemption. I think I'd have to recuse myself from that, having talked to Elaine, Ellen earlier today.
All right, so, would you like to make a motion that we adopt or not adopt the first part of the recommendations the assessors?
So moved.
Because we, okay. All right, so that would mean the recommendation of the assessors is not to adopt the open space discount. That's what we're going to discuss or vote on now. Okay? Any comments?
There is none to even vote on, on the open space.
That's correct.
Okay, but they made the, they made that recommendation, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, I'll second that.
Okay. I guess no discussion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Move not to adopt the small commercial exemption?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Not adopt.
Not to adopt the small commercial exemption. That's the motion. Okay? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Not to adopt the residential exemption?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
And I recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, so it would be recruit, recuse yourself, so it's just going to be 4-0, and one, one person recused themselves. Okay. The last one of the Board of Assessors' recommendation, shift the tax rate to 140, which is what it has been.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's 5-0 in favor of that motion. Okay. We thank you very much. We stayed the same.
Thank you very much for your time and for your patience listening to me drone on through the explanations.
No, I mean, this is a very important thing, especially to folks out there.
Oh, yes.
For you to discuss it a little bit at length is educating for them. Thank you.
Let's hope they recorded it so they can go back through it a few times.
It's going to be on Area 58.
Okay. Thank you. I think Mr. Clark is raring to take over the gavel. Pretty obvious where we're at, Ron, we're, yeah, where are we?
Town meeting articles.
Town meeting articles.
Town meeting articles.
All right, so we, we
All right, so we, uh, we, our last meeting, I believe, we voted the language for the town meeting articles, and now we'll be voting our support up or down for the town meeting articles.
The first article that will appear on the town meeting ballot is, uh, an endorsement
of the use of community preservation funds to pay for a portion of the school, of the new school.
Are we going to take them all at once, or you want to take them one at a time?
One at a time.
It's not paying for a portion of the new school.
It's for, it's for the playgrounds and whatnot.
The recreational fields.
Okay, I count that as the cost of the entire school. Okay, it's good paying, it's going towards the entire cost of the school project, if that's better.
Diminishing the cost of the entire school project.
Just Chairman, through you, I have a question for the town administrator. If we approve the articles as written, uh, they go forward to the special town meeting, can they be modif, amended on the floor, or are we locked in? You know, what we agree to is what has to go before town meeting.
At town meeting floor, the town meeting has the authorization to amend articles. They cannot increase the values. They can reduce the values. They could change the text. And that's for any article that goes to town meeting. Having said that, I would strongly advise, um, town meeting and the Board of Selectmen that these articles have been reviewed by MSBA. Everyone's heard me with this mantra before. It's M, M, MSBA is money, and we have to follow their rules. And their rules are, they have certain language requirements that they put into this, which we have included. Then on top of that is we also have to run particularly Articles One and Two by bond council and also by town council. We had tried to include some additional language in these that bond council did reject. Just to make things a little bit clearer, that's why we spent some time on the informational summary. So again, technically, the answer is yes. For these two articles, I would strongly recommend that town meeting does not, do not amend either of these articles on town meeting floor.
And that's why I wanted to get it out there for people who are watching to understand that, you know, th, these are very carefully worded and crafted articles. So, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, on Article Number One, which is the CPA funding, um, this article, um, has an informational summary tied into it. We have, uh, received on average about seventy-one percent return, uh, from the state on our CPA funds. We currently have over a million dollars in our CPA account. The intent of the CPA committee is to borrow no more than one million dollars of the 1.9 that it's requesting, and the rest to pay for out of existing funds. That borrowing may be lowered based upon how the cash flow is at the particular time. I will also say that this article, in essence, saves the town, the taxpayers, money because we do receive grant funds for this. We do have half the grant funds already in-house. If we did not do this article, the taxpayers would have to pay a hundred percent of this 1.983 million dollars. The, uh...
And by that, you mean it's not reimbursable as part of the MSBA?
That is correct.
Project.
So this is an opportunity of getting grant money where we would not have gotten any because the project exceeds the eight percent cap on site work, as do all suburban projects. I do want to bring your attention to, to one item in, in the proposed motion, and that is, uh, about a third of the way down, you'll see the transfer of $10,000. We're doing our final accounting on that. That may actually go up to $15,000 or $16,000. In essence, that is the surplus money that has been left over from the playground improvements done over at the library. That project was managed very well. Sarah Humans was involved in, in spearheading that, and there is surplus funds available. The CPA committee wants to reallocate the balance of those funds in the, in the tune of, you know, it's probably going to be fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars as part of the funding for this. I think what that demonstrates is the CPA's constant review, as well as the, the town administrator and others, to make sure that we wisely spend the money and where we're able to do things under budget, that we take those surpluses and we reinvest them back into another project. So although it's a small amount of money, I think that the principle is the same. Another component to this is that as this project moves forward is we will have a, a, a design committee, if you will, that will consist of a member of the CPA committee, the elementary school principal, the school facilities director, a recreation of the, um, representative of the recreation committee, and myself, um, as we get into further design to figure out how we can potentially reduce these costs. So this is an offset limit, um, and, um, the finance committee voted last week five to zero in support of this after some lengthy conversations.
I believe the capital outlay committee also has voted unanimously on this article as well.
That's correct. Apologize for that.
What is the pleasure of the Board on Article One?
Would it be appropriate for us to read the motion, so folks at home know what we're voting on?
We just sort of discussed it, but if we want to read the entire actual motion?
No, that's why I'm asking you.
Go ahead.
You could say, "My voice isn't going to handle it."
All right. I move that the town vote to hear and act on recommendations by the Community Preservation Committee for the creation and/or rehabilitation of land for recreational use on the existing school site at eighty-five Main Street in Carver, Massachusetts. In particular, construction of recreational fields and play areas, related parking and irrigation, including all incidental and related costs, all to be undertaken in conjunction with the new elementary school project addressed in more detail in Article Two of this warrant, and to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund the total sum of $1,983,313 as follows. Transfer the sum of $973,313 from the undesignated fund balance, transfer the sum of $10,000 or more. Um, how do we say that?
You just did.
Okay. Uh, from Article Twenty, Item D, Restoration Rehabilitation of Playground of the 2014 Annual Town Meeting, and borrow the sum of one million under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four B, Section Eleven, Chapter, Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven or Eight, and that's the, um, Community Preservation Act, or any other enabling authority, and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum, because I'm tight, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And further, to authorize the town administrator, in consultation with the Community Preservation Committee chairperson, to expend such funds in the most fiscally responsible manner and to manage the approved project from planning and design to procurement, including negotiation of contracts and change orders, with quarterly updates to the Board of Selectmen, and to order, authorize the town administrator to take such additional action as may be necessary to carry out the vote to be taken hereunder, provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on the borrowing for the new elementary school project proposed under Article Two, from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, parentheses, Proposition Two and a Half.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article Two is the...
Again, just for clarification, that $10,000 may move up to $16,000, and it'll just come out of the 973, but the total sum will be there, just adjusting some of that. So again, just for full disclosure.
Article Two is the actual article that would, uh, town meeting's recommendation and to move forward with the new elementary school project. I guess I'll read the motion on this one. That the town appropriate the amount of $49,970,272 for the purpose of paying cost of a new Carver Elementary School for grades K through five and a preschool program on the existing school site located at eighty-five Main Street in Carver, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which may include but not be limited to reconfiguration of the school site for related uses such as pedestrian pathways, parking, bus, and other vehicle traffic routes, and demolition of the existing school at the end of the project. The proj, uh, known as, known as the project, apparently. Which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of school building for at least fifty years, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen? That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of fifty-nine and forty-seven hundredths percent of eligible approved cost as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation herein to shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to ex, to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA. This is the pleasure of the Board.
Second.
Well, they need the motion. I just read it.
Oh. I'm so moved.
Actually, I think, uh, probably Mr. Ward should move this.
Oh, certainly.
As, just, just think of symbolically as the chair of the building committee, if...
I would love to make that motion.
And I'd like to second.
Further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I got to ask, if for some reason this does not pass the special town meeting, what happens?
Uh, the ballot vote will still go forward on December twelfth. Uh, that is a scheduled election that will have workers on, and it's an official election. Thereafter, um, and, and after the first, uh, the board would need to reconvene and determine what its Plan B is. Uh, I am hopeful we don't have to have that discussion. I think that the project that has been put forward by the school building committee at the direction of the Board of Selectmen addresses many of the issues that were raised in the past, including, I'm going to just list a couple. This is a new construction project. This is not a renovation project. This new construction is better configured for, um, students. It will, it has a useful lifespan of fifty years. We anticipate it lasting seventy-five or more years. This project is slated to cost $49 million for the building. The previous project would have ended up costing $67 million. We have got, uh, the impact down to the average household of $359. The Board of Selectmen has also taken action to reallocate, uh, additional, uh, solar money to reduce that down an additional six percent. I anticipate that if we continue our financial management policies as we have, and, um, that we should, uh, be in line for a successful bond rating, and we may be able to further reduce down our debt service on this project, thereby reducing the funds down. Uh, this, in my opinion, is the best project that the town of Carver is going to receive. Again, it's significantly cheaper and better than the renovation project, and it has, uh, received unanimous support in every committee that it has been, uh, reviewed by. And that includes a wide, or a cross, uh, demographic, uh, committee, that's the school building committee. It, the school building committee represents people from every different, um, division, if you will, within the town of Carver. It has received approval, uh, from the capital outlay committee. It has received unanimous approval from the finance committee. I do not believe the other projects ever received unanimous vote of support from the finance committee. Having said all those items, um, we know we need to build a new school. Um, the, the building we have right now, we're just throwing good money after bad, and the sooner we get this moving, the, the, uh, the least it's going to cost the town. Uh, so for all of those reasons, and I'm sure a whole list of other things that I haven't mentioned, uh, I do believe that, um, the taxpayers in Carver will support this project.
Uh, I'd like to answer that question also. Uh, if you want, I, I am going to be a little negative. If we don't pass the school, it will mean that we will have to move forward and invest large amounts of money in the two buildings that are there now in order that our kids can inhabit that building for the next possible ten years. Because if we vote the school, we are two and a half years from putting the youngsters in a new school. Okay? If we turn it down, the, probably the first that we can bring it up again, and, and we can, we may be able to, but it'll be anywhere from five to ten years, and then add two and a half or three years to that, and then you're trashing everything that we may have to invest to make these two schools inhabitable. And, 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 uh, Mrs. Ferran said at our last selectmen's meeting, what one thing would you like to put this school into context with? My thing is, this school, every child is going to be in a room, every room, that has windows with natural light, and that open. And when I look at the Irwin Washburn School and see these interior classrooms with no natural light, with some open walls, and then ventilation, no natural ventilation if anything is needed. So that's my big thing.
I appreciate the comments. That's why I put the question out there, because I don't think this, you know, the public can hear these words enough.
Thank you, Ellen, for asking.
I believe we have a motion in a second?
And, Mr. Chair, I, I just wanted, um, if Michael could please tell us again, what's the anticipated reimbursement from the state on this school project, just so folks know?
Um, so we are anticipating, um, receiving a grant from MSBA of $26.2 million, uh, or fifty-nine, um, uh, fifty-nine point...
Six-four.
Four, seven percent of the grant funds.
And that's the lowest we would receive?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, I think, just to piggyback on Mr. Ward's comment, if we had to spend significantly new money into the existing buildings right now, that is one hundred percent, one, zero, zero percent on the taxpayers of Carver. The MSBA will not fund repairs for a building that's functionally obsolete.
We have a motion in a second? Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article Three essentially is the article we took up, or the, the motion we took up a couple of weeks ago, where we wanted to, uh, do some advanced work on the, uh, design portion of the project in order to avoid winter, um, foundation work. And, uh, we did authorize that, the board did move to authorize that. So all Article Three is doing is essentially taking the money that was authorized at that time and reallocating it back to the original sources.
That is correct for the first two items. Uh, I did, just for the record, I did give, uh, Mr. Doug in a copy of the report that was put together for our project managers, so he understood where the numbers are coming from, and he's going to review that. Uh, the capital outlay committee, uh, did follow the Board of Selectmen's recommendation at their last meeting, and they did vote to transfer $154,000 out of their capital outlay debt lease and project management account, um, and the selectmen did approve to move the $31,000. It is my recommendation that these two funds be reimbursed by our free cash, um, that has been certified by the state. In essence, by doing that, that's going to be $185,000 that we won't have to borrow, because in essence, it's, it's money coming out of our bank account. So all of the numbers that I've said before, they keep on getting a little bit smaller every time we're able to use cash versus bar, doing debt exclusion vote. Uh, so that's what the recommendation would be. I do want to take a moment just to talk about free cash for a second, and I really don't like the term free cash because it's a little bit deceiving, uh, and that's why in the informational summary here, it does have, uh, you know, an... summary here, it does have, you know, in essence, what the DOR recommendation is, which from a business standpoint, it's akin to being your profit. So if you receive additional revenues beyond what you anticipated or if you've been able to spend less than what you were planning to, those two figures equal free cash, which in the private sector is profit. But, so, DOR's recommendation is that a well-run town should have between three and five percent of its revenue in free cash. I'm happy to say that this is the second year in a row that we have met that target. And with that, that is why I'm recommending that we use a portion of that free cash to pay for these two items. The last item, the police detail agency account, you've seen this on our audits before. This is a legacy issue that we are addressing. In essence, whether it was through bills that were unpaid for details over the years or incorrect coding, there is a liability that DOR reviewed in our account of sixty-seven four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars for FY fifteen, which did hit our free cash. My intent with fixing this audit issue and using some free cash to do it, and oh, by the way, that is an upset limit, by the time we get to town meeting, we're going to have that number down, is that this will take, this will resolve this audit finding and both our police chief and our finance team have taken steps to make sure this trend that happened years ago does not continue. And again, I want to emphasize, the dollar amount that you have right there is an upset limit. When we get to town meeting, I will be having a lower figure on that as things move forward. But again, the net of this and why this is on here is we are going to be borrowing a significant lot of money in 2016, in the calendar year 2016, and I'm trying to do everything within your authority to reduce down any negatives that our bond rating agencies may see. So where we have actionable items right here, we try to fix them. There's a legacy issue, corrective steps have been taken, but it's time to get it resolved.
Was there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as we have seen, Carver is benefiting from having multiple tax agreements with different solar projects. With that, we have four new solar projects coming down the pipeline that will be going through the planning board. And with that, as I have stated, Carver has some of the most beneficial tax agreements for the town compared to any other municipality in Massachusetts. These tax agreements do protect the town from political interference or legislative or lobbying amendments that are being constantly discussed and, more importantly, we're able to receive a small premium for these agreements because it allows the developers to get better financing when they have a stabilized tax rate. So for all of those reasons, these are our form, Carver's form of economic development. None of these projects have any neighborhood issues that I'm aware of and at the same token, all this article does is it gives the board the authority to negotiate these. It doesn't, you know, make sure you don't have to do these, but town meeting has on several occasions given that authority. I think it's in the town's best interest to continue to have these.
So the proposed motion would be that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into the payment in lieu of tax agreement specified in Article Four as amended with Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., its successors assigns or affiliates relative to parcels of land located at Zero Federal Road, Map One Thirty-One, Parcell One Point One, One Point Two, One Point Three, and Sixteen West Street, Map One Nineteen and One Twenty-One parcels to be consolidated from deeds, Book Thirty-two, Four Seventy-four.
So moved.
There a second?
I'd like to second it, but I have an editorial question.
Sure.
Is Sixteen West Street Mr. Paddock's property?
No.
Oh, okay, all right, because I was going to say that's...
I'm going to recuse myself because I think that's mine.
No, Year Twenty West Street. Oh, Sixteen, never mind. Okay, I just want to make sure because Mr. Paddock's is a different company.
My son will be taking over the property, so it'll be...
All right, Mr. Ward will be recusing himself. We've got a motion in a second. And again, these are paid by the developer. The town does receive its full and equitable share plus a premium for these and it protects the town in the long run. Further discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Is this different than the two we've already talked about where we're going to be using that money to help offset the cost of the school project or is it the same one?
These are new projects. Those are already done, those have already been executed.
So would there be a possibility of using some of these resources also to offset the cost or...
The answer to your question is that a possibility, the answer is yes. What I would suggest is let's go forward, get these projects moving along, negotiate an agreement. Once the agreement's negotiated, then it'll be up to the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the capital outlay to weigh out priorities. And at that time, I would suggest you have that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Because the other alternative would be if we go to the capital building stabilization fund that moves the police station up very quickly. So as, again, once we have something in place, that's when we can have the debate. We have a motion in a second, further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
With one recusal.
In one recusal, sorry. I want to thank the board. I know we have spent a lot of time and energy and certainly some of our members more than others in digging into the school project. I think this is, I think the idea that the capital outlay committee, the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen have all now unanimously endorsed this school project speaks well for the project and the effort that went into it. And so that I look forward to, gosh, it's just Thanksgiving next week and the Monday after that's the town meeting. And then just a week and a half after that, we have the townwide election, so...
And, Mr. Chairman, remember that it's tomorrow that the MSBA votes, so we'll know for sure what the money is. And then Thursday, there'll be the informational meeting at the Governor John that I really encourage anybody who still has a lingering question, whether or not they're going to vote for this project, really attend that discussion because any question you possibly have will be able to be answered during that presentation.
The entire committee, the project manager and the architects will be at that meeting.
And by the way, the school building committee has unanimously endorsed this project as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, those dates are Tuesday, December second, December first at seven PM.
Monday, December first.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Is it Tuesday?
Tuesday, December first.
That's right, yes. As I said, Tuesday, December first.
And December twelfth for the ballot vote, I would encourage every resident of Carver to find a date and bring them to both of those events.
And isn't the last day to register to vote this coming Friday, the twentieth?
Correct.
Correct. Until eight PM.
At eight PM.
Oh, she's staying open late?
Yes.
She asked to, yep.
Excellent. All right, thank you all. Now we move to the town administrator update, of which you only have nine minutes left.
So the first item that I just want to bring up is last week, with the assistance of SERPED, twenty-two communities signed up for a new regional bulk electricity buying program and that rate was locked in at point zero-nine-four-nine cents per kilowatt. That is lower than what the ever-source winter rate's going to be of ten-point-eight cents per kilowatt. And that is for a two-year term. People will be receiving notice in the mail shortly on the availability of opting out of that. Preliminary estimates are that if all residents of Carver and businesses that are not on a program right now continue on that, it could save in essence of two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars town-wide to peoples and businesses' pocketbooks.
When, what, when's that taking effect?
That'll take place on July first, I believe it is, the first billing in July, I'm sorry, January.
You said January.
January.
January two thousand sixteen, but you will be getting notice over the next few weeks.
I'm just thinking, it's been a while since we had that original hearing and I know anyone that's looked at their bill sees three different charges listed on their bill. It might be good perhaps at maybe our second December meeting to, I don't know if we have, if the planning director would be in position to do it or you, or perhaps getting someone in from SERPED, just to walk us through that again so that everybody can have a greater familiarity with it just to make sure. Because again, when you look at your bill, there's distribution charges and generation charges and so that it can be explained exactly what we're talking about with this because I know Helen and I were talking about, we had made deals for different portions of it. So this would be able to help those people that may also out there have made deals with other companies that are out there understand exactly what their options are and how they're affected by it. So if we can ask to have that on the agenda for the second meeting in December?
And whether they have to opt out or...
Right, yep.
We will provide an update on that.
Thank you.
The update on the school building committee project tomorrow?
Yep, I'll, can I pick it up from there? I was going to say it in the update on the school project, but I'll do it now.
Oh, yeah, actually, I'm done.
Wait a minute, excuse me?
Good time.
What?
Did you all hear that correctly?
Two.
Wow.
Well, then we move to the, we're going quick here. We're not giving them a chance to think of something else. Board of Selectmen, board of selectmen comment period, Helen, you're up.
And I have nothing tonight except Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yeah, it's hard to believe it, though.
I can't believe it's Thanksgiving, but we have a lot to be grateful for, so we have a lot to pray for, but we have a lot to be grateful for, so Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
I went to the road race, the Doreen Merritt Community Fund Race Saturday at Edeville. Mr. Delapaskoldi is serving on the building committee with me and I ran into him and he took me on a tour. The Thomas, the train facility, the different components of Edeville, I was, I was really dis, I'm not dismayed, that's negative, impressed. I mean, it is, it is first class.
And all.
It is, I thought about it, you know, Eastern Mass and the Cape, with the quality of things that are going in there and the cost is going to be a primary drawing card for the Cape and Eastern Mass. And it's going to be drawing from out in New York and other areas because they're advertising big and it's a great, it's a great take for children. So I wanted to mention that.
And festival lights is coming up, too.
Yeah.
Yep, and it's jobs.
I believe, is it the twentieth that they open?
Something like that.
But it's a lot of things, I know, it's, I looked at the houses across the street and I know those citizens may be concerned, but I think he's doing everything he can to protect them and I think it's really a great economic boost for, eventually for our town, jobs, so. Second thing was, I'll talk about the school when we go to that right after the comment period and I also, like Helen, want to wish everybody a good Thanksgiving. I know we've been in shock as to what's going on on TV every single hour and every sing, it's a sad thing that we have this situation in our world and I don't know, other than maybe we got to be thankful that we are, like Ellen said, here and not having that happen to us. Anyway.
Thank you. Ellen?
Again, I'd like to share Helen and Dick's comments and I'm sure Sarah and Ron. For everybody out there to have a wonderful Thanksgiving, but also this time of year, please remember those less fortunate, so if you can come up with some donations for the food banks, that'd be really appreciative. Again, I think, I agree, we really have to be thankful that we have the town that we live in and it's something special and I think we should really be thankful for it. Thank you.
Sarah?
Yes, I just wanted to remind people again, without boring everyone, that the last day to register to vote is Friday, November twentieth. And it is a myth that you will be called to jury duty by the act of registering to vote. You will be called to jury duty whether or not you're registered to vote.
I was just called to jury duty.
They do, the two are not related, so please register to vote.
No, I did not recently register to vote and yet I, on January ninth, I need to appear at the Plymouth District Court.
How'd you get Plymouth? I always get stuck going to Brockton.
Yeah, so my point is that it's very important to register to vote. This school project is very important, we need it. It's going to be more expensive if we don't get it and our children deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll join the rest of my board in wishing everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. It's a great time to get together with family and count our blessings. I will also mention that the Carver Lions Club has a fundraiser this Saturday down at the Council on Aging. It is, we're going to have a day of psychic readings from ten o'clock to three o'clock, two-dollar entry fee and it's twenty dollars for a reading, so that we invite anyone to come by and participate and hope that, I know that there are a lot of people that have expressed an interest in this and I am actually curious myself, I'm toying with the idea of having a reading done, but anyway, anyone that's interested, two-dollar entry fee and it's twenty dollars for a reading this Saturday, ten to three at the Council on Aging. And again...
Can I mention one more thing if you're done?
Well, I wasn't done, but go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, I'll...
No, after you.
Well, I just didn't say, I said all kinds of things about Thomas the Train and everything at Edeville. The race, the Doreen Merritt Scholarship Fund or Community Fund race was very successful and beautiful day and went very well. I would have got clubbed if I didn't say so.
The only other thing I wanted to add is alluding to Dick's comments, it was about a little over fourteen years ago that we suffered through nine-eleven and the tragedy and the horror of what took place at the World Trade Center. And in France, the day after, their leading paper, the headline was, "We Are All Americans." So at this time, I think we all need to put our hearts and thoughts and prayers with France and our fellow French citizens there and keep them in our hearts as we move forward and hope that this scourge can be sent back under the rock that it emerged from. Okay.
They had a huge American flag ceremony at that time. It was beautiful.
And the French and the English, who are not known to be on the friendliest, they just had a soccer game last night in England and they, the French insisted that the game go on, the English wouldn't call it off. They decorated the entire English stadium with French flags and only sang the French National Anthem to start the game, so.
Nice.
It's a hard way to bring the world together, but I just hope that we can eliminate the scourge. Anyway, moving on, the update on the elementary school project.
We've already said quite a bit, I just want to emphasize, tomorrow, the Mass School Building Authority will be voting on the schematics of our plans with our building committee and the budget and finances. We hope and we are encouraged by things that have happened in the past that they're going to vote in favor, but you can't guarantee. So going into Boston, I'm sure Mr. Malinowski's going, I'm going, superintendent, the project managers, the architects and...
A box of cranberries, case.
Are you bribing with cranberries?
I will do it at the...
I say whatever works.
I will do it afterwards.
Are these the special cranberries?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
With a little recipe thing in there.
Okay.
Anyway. The important thing here is, yes, tomorrow is the eighteenth and the MSBA will be voting on our project. Thursday, the day after, this week, at the school is an open forum for anyone, as Ellen brought out, and I'm saying it again, Ellen, because it's, I want to emphasize that date and time. And you will, at that meeting, there will be the building committee, there will be the school principal, there will be the project managers, there will be the architects and any questions... architects, and any questions that you may have, which could very well be something new, okay, I'm sure that we can address, and you'll be able to look around the school, 'cause they will have tours. So that, that would be the nineteenth.
Mr. Chairman.
At what, at what time?
What?
The nineteenth, at seven o'clock.
And at what room do they meet at?
It's gonna be in the cafeteria, in the Urone Washburn School.
In the back.
In the back. But when you get there, you'll see where the big crowds are moving. Um, now, the big thing, yeah, we have Thanksgiving next week, and then the following Tuesday is the town meeting. Very important for everyone to get out to that. And then, again, on the twelfth, is our ballot question, which is big. Okay, so, thank you, everybody out there.
Okay, we now take up a Class Two license, Carmino Alange DBA Landmark Auto Sales and Charge Quintal DBA Charlie's Auto.
I believe these are two separate licenses we're talking about?
Yes, they are. There you are. Do you want me to? So, Mr. Chair, um, the reason, um, I beg your pardon, the reason Carmino Alange, uh, DBA Landmark Auto Sales is on here, is because if you read the permit that the Board of Selectmen, um, apparently, or, already issued, it says at the bottom that there's a fifteen-vehicle limit, no display, not to be in view of the street.
Is this the one where we had the issue where they had three on the side of the building?
That's correct, and the pictures that the owner showed us, showed no cars. I want you to know that these were taken.
But I think also Jack Hunter, who at the time was town planner, indicated that he didn't think it was an issue either.
Well, that's the planning board, though, this is the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So my.
Thank you for clarification.
No, I understand that, um, but our permit says, "No display, not to be in view of the street." These pictures were taken driving north on Route fifty-eight, across the street from the property, in a moving vehicle, so that's the first picture. I, I just want you to know that this is not my idea of no display and not to be in view of the street, and it may seem petty, but this is not what our license indicates. So that's the first picture, and this is the second picture. And you can clearly see the flag that says, "Used Cars," the vehicles with the writing on them, I mean, I think it's just the.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I have to agree with Sarah on issuing a license, if you let one license not abide by what we had agreed to, then it's not fair to the next license that's abiding by every rule, so, the, and this has come up a discussion a few times, this particular location, so, I have, I, I agree with Sarah.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I appreciate the pictures, and I can understand the point, but what do we expect the person to do? Put them way up in the back? Because this is only a, a side part of the driveway. To me, if you're displaying a car, you're gonna have it in front of the building in the front parking lot, so, I mean, I think we're being a little.
Then, Alan, I think this should read, "You can display your fifteen vehicles in the front." If you want him to do that, then that's what it should say on the permit. There are people in town who have permits to sell used cars online, and they do just fine. They don't show their vehicles, there's nothing there, you would never guess that they sold cars, so either change the permit to let him display, if that's what you really wanna do, or make him abide by the conditions of the permit. I don't think it's, it's not particularly onerous permit, but as I said, there are people who do it online and don't display a thing.
I, when, this came up before, we discussed this before, and Dick, Jack was specifically asked, uh, if these are, you know, he talked about the three on the side, it was discussed then, Jack Hunter, who was the town planner at the time, said he didn't think they could be seen from the street. Uh, I made the point to drive by myself a couple of times, and looking over, I didn't see them.
Well, there's your, there's the pictures.
There were cars there, but I had to go look for them.
No, that's.
As I casually, as I casually drove by, I didn't spot them.
Well, that's driving north, which is across the street.
I, I.
And those pictures were taken, please?
That was in maybe late October.
I guess all I'm saying is, I drove north and south, and I had to look for them, to see them, they were, it's not like they were, uh, out in the, I, I didn't think, I, I thought it was within the context of the, uh, of the, of the, of the article. I, I, I specifically, we'd had the discussion, I drove up and down, I looked over, I could see there were some cars there, but for all I knew, those were cars, uh, from someone that, uh, you know, rented something in the.
Well, there's a flag, Ron, that says, "Used Cars," I mean, it's very clear, there's writing on the car.
No, there's no flag there when I drove by. I can say, I can tell you that.
It's like a used car sales flag flying.
Do, can I, uh, say something? When we had this young man in to talk about it, he's doing primarily his business on the computer, that's what I understood.
That was my understanding.
That, that he was gonna have his cars on display, but out back. I didn't, I didn't recall him, uh, I remember that we had some discussion on something on the side, but I, originally, I think he was going to do his business on the computer, and he was gonna have his cars or vehicles out back.
He actually showed us a picture of his property that showed no, no vehicles on it, which.
But we did discuss the fact that he'd have three on the side, we specifically did discuss that.
Right, the picture that he showed us showed no vehicles on it, and, I mean, I might say, I'm suggesting that this doesn't, showing three vehicles and a, and a flag that says "Used Cars."
Well, I, see, I, I, I agree with the flag part, 'cause when I drove by, there was no flag.
It, it doesn't seem like such a horrible thing, in the whole universe of, of things that are horrible, but if we want him, either he conforms to what's here, or we change the license.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is, you and I having a disagreement as to whether they are visible from the street or not.
"No display," it says, what's the picture?
Well, the flag, the flag, I agree with the flag, I would agree, remove the flag. I don't have a problem with the cars being there, I guess, is all I'm saying.
Well, they are on display, Ron, and that's not what the permit says, that's my point.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Donovan.
I think, I think we can, we can solve this real quick. I make a motion that, in order to renew this permit, that all cars are placed in the back of, of the property. Nothing on the side, nothing on the front.
Well, no, we originally approved it with the understanding he might have three on the side.
But since they, they're clearly visible on the side, we change it to say, "None." I mean.
Big sign.
All right, there's a motion to require that all the vehicles be in the back.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Need to take the used car.
And, well, yeah, the flag should be removed as well. You're adding that to your?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Okay, further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Just me. All right, we'll move on to the next one, which is Charles, Charles Quintal DBA Charlie's Auto.
And this one I have a lot of problem with.
Me, too.
This is the one on Wenham Street?
Yeah, this is the one I wanted.
This one's been going on for years, I can testify to that as a former town employee.
Who would like to summarize the issue with, uh, Charles Quintal DBA Charlie's Auto?
This was the Marina, right?
Yeah, this is.
No, this is, they buy Haring Brook, across the street from Old County.
Well, everybody's been kidding around, it's a Marina.
Because there's boats over there.
Do you wanna take the lead on this one, or you want me to?
It doesn't matter, it's, um, the property on Wenham Road, that's supposed to be a two-stall garage, um, and it's been an ongoing problem for several years now.
Actually, about ten years.
Yeah, and the town has been extremely accommodating, giving this, um, owner time to clean up, there's a lot of debris, it's, um, impacting on the wetlands with all of the garbage that's around there, and we have several, um, doc, pieces of documentation that the Conservation Agent, the Planning Board, the Board of Health.
Fire Department.
The Fire Department has gone out on several occasions to work with the owners, because the last thing you want to do is take away somebody's license to do business, but, um, it doesn't appear that they are cooperating. Um, there's a property inspection report here from, I believe it was May Marlene, um, stating that this property has been identified as having a significant adverse impact on the health and safety of the neighborhood. Um, that's just one comment, and there's several other pieces, um, within all of the correspondence that we have on this property. So I, um, had a big concern about signing off all of the license, um, on this at this point, because I think we've given them ample time to work with the town, to keep that property updated and to stop, I mean, the, the bottom line is, it's, it, it's only licensed for two vehicles, and if you drive by that property, there's abandoned, you know, beat-up cars, trucks, a boat, it, it, it's horrible.
What, Mr. Chairman? What conditions are we asking in order to grant the license?
Well, also, I believe, for further explanation, I believe the ConCon has, uh, placed a requirement upon them.
Well, they've issued an enforcement order, which is a stop-work order and can't be superseded by pretty much anybody.
Um, so, and if, in the packet that, uh, has been provided to us, you can see the latest inspection done by Brooke, our Conservation Agent, uh, as to violations, uh, that are, um, currently existing on the property. Also, I've driven by the property a couple of times, and I noticed that there are actually cars over across the street on twenty-four Wenham Road, which in my understanding is, the person that, who's working at twenty, owns twenty-five, is selling them from twenty-four, which would be in violation also.
It's horrible.
What, uh, what is the board looking to do?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, our first, our first, next, first meeting in December is actually special town meeting, correct? So I would like to see, I believe the ConCons got their order out. I would say we need to have the property owner, before our board, at our second December meeting, telling us what they've done to correct the problems that the Conservation Agent has, uh, pointed out, what the Con, what the ConCon has cited them for, and also any violations in our current permit. At that time, if he is not, or she, has not corrected all the problems, and does not have a comprehensive plan to go ahead and correct the problems, that we, uh, pull the license from the individual.
All right, so, basically, sorry, Helen?
I, um, quite frankly, have a concern, and, you know, if that worked out, it would be worth discussion, but this has been going on for several years, and so I'm even leaning towards not reissuing a license, because what seems to happen, and I, I would like to have them come in and talk, because again, the last thing I want to do is, you know, take away somebody's income, that's the last thing. However, it's, are they gonna clean up to make it look good, and then start all over again?
Well, that's what I say, you know, we withhold the two, uh, the two thousand sixteen license, call them in before here, and like I said, if they have not made all the corrections, they have to submit a detailed plan, and if any time they don't follow through with that plan, we immediately go ahead and pull the license again.
Right.
You know, but I wanna give the property owner at least two weeks, this'll work out to almost a month, to make the necessary, uh, changes that are being directed at the property owner, and considering the amount of problems they have on that site, it's gonna take them more than two weeks. So this will be, I think this is being more than generous with this property owner to get their house in order.
Right.
And to come to, before the board. If they can't do it in that timeframe, I'm sorry, it's a blight, it's an eyesore, it's, it's a, uh, pollution problem for, uh, the Brooke, then we shut it down.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Make a comment? Um, this enforcement order was issued in August, so he's had.
Long time.
He's had a lot of time, and he's, he's had this issue for many, many years. I was just wondering if, uh, it might not be appropriate if we wait to see whether he in fact files the attached notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, which is a permit application, and, and whether he, uh, abides by the order to cease and desist.
Well, we'll have all that if we schedule him for the second meeting in December, right?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how much time the Conservation Commission is giving him, I, I was, I don't know if Maureen, Marlene wants to fill us in on that.
I, I do realize that, and I, believe me, I believe this person has more than enough time to comply with it, but I'm just looking at it from a potential legal problem.
Yep.
They could say, "We're not giving, we as the Board of Selectmen are not giving them ample notification." This way, I believe, you know, if it goes before.
I don't think we're under any obligation to approve their license unless, if we choose not to.
Yeah, I mean, he has a cease and desist right now, which we, we have nothing to do with.
I know.
And can't change, which is good.
Oh, you missed it, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I asked Marlene.
Yeah, I wanted to add a question while she's up here, that if you could also answer.
Plus, there's also some legal issues that we need to be aware of, as this owner has filed litigation against the town in the past. So whatever you decide tonight, I do wanna have the ability of just coordinating that with legal counsel on all of these items, but I think your intent is very clear, that you have certain expectations, you feel those expectations have not been, uh, resolved, and the individual is subject to not having his license renewed for the next year.
Hence why my suggestion was for our second meeting in December to give the legal vehicles all the time they need.
In the meantime, we do have our town administrator before us, and Marlene, if you want to add whatever you would like on this topic, fe, please feel free.
So the Conservation Commission gave him thirty days to respond, and we've had no response.
And this was back in August?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And that's a very standard, the thirty days is very generous and very standard.
Marlene, I don't, I hope you may be able to answer this, but I am just curious, on the property inspection report, there was a, um, statement here that says, "In conclusion, this vacant property of twenty-five Wenham Road is currently owned by such and such," I don't wanna name the, "The planning and community development goal is to get this property rehabbed, up to code, and secure and sold to new owners." So, is that just a hope, or is that something that was discussed with him?
That sort of preceded Marlene.
Yeah, I don't think.
That was Jack Hunter.
So you wouldn't know about.
That's not my opinion.
Okay. That's not your opinion.
That's his language.
Meaning that's, this isn't, it doesn't mean that's not her opinion, it means this isn't her opinion.
That's not my statement.
Yeah.
It was accurate.
That was cute.
Uh, all right, so is it satisfactory, then, that we ask them to appear before us for the second meeting in December?
Uh, can we make it stronger than "ask"?
Require? I, I, I don't think we have subpoena power, so.
No, but I think we can require, uh, under penalty of losing their license.
Intent is very clear, we'll make sure the appropriate wording is, uh, transmitted to them.
Thank you.
And served appropriately.
In failure to appear, I would assume this board will probably not renew the license.
Sure, Michael will handle that.
Could be. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on. We go to the approval of the two thousand and sixteen licenses. Unpaid taxes are shaded, I'm gonna guess we're going to exclude them from, or maybe make subject to taxes being paid before their licenses would be approved. Is there someone, after reviewing this, that would like to make a motion that we renew the license, licenses listed on these two pages, making sure that in order to receive their license, that they have demonstrated that they have, uh, paid all unpaid taxes?
I'll make that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are the two licenses we discussed on this list?
No.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, uh, motion that we.
The women, I do see.
I believe they were.
This Charlie's Auto is there, so.
Oh, it was not taken off.
We'll make that an exception.
And so is Landmark Auto Sales.
And so we'll take that off of there, so the, uh, motion would be, would to the excluding Charlie's Auto and Landmark Auto Sales, 'cause we have to rewrite that license.
Subject to pay taxes or an agreement with the treasurer collector.
Yes.
Correct. Again, we do collect fourteen plus percent interest on these.
So moved.
Tucker?
Further discussion?
I thought you were going to approve Landmark with all of their vehicles being in the back, we're just going to rewrite the license.
We have, we need to rewrite the license, um.
So you are going to include them?
Well, we'll include them subject to, with the, yeah, I guess we can include them subject to the rewritten license, correct?
Possible.
Otherwise, we'll have, have to wait and vote it again, uh, December.
Yes, pending, pending rewriting of that.
Yeah, the, the, after the license is rewritten to, uh, accommodate the new wording, okay? So Landmark would be included, subject to revision.
Okay.
But Charlie's Auto is excluded. And I think that motion has again been amended and seconded, if I'm correct.
And those are your words.
If there's, well, that's my opinion.
Oh, Jesus.
If there's no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We move on to comprehensive permit fees.
Marlene, you want to come back up? Basically, the Board of Selectmen reviews and approves all fees for the town. As, in your memo you received at the last meeting from Marlene, there were several things that we identified that have not been done yet in the town of Carver, and this will be our first comprehensive permit going forward through the whole process. As part of that, we need to have proper procedures and also a permit fee scheduled, and you have Marlene's recommendation in front of you.
So we have these two, am I reading, that we have just these two permit fees that we're looking at?
I see one.
Comprehensive permit fees?
Actually, I-
Oh, that's, wait a minute, I got two of the same here?
One.
Yeah, so there's just one, okay. I just have two papers.
You say, I only see one, I only see one comprehensive, comprehensive permit fee, which is the fee of $1,000 plus $50 per proposed dwelling unit.
That's what I had.
The applicant providing all necessary funds for peer review consultants in accordance with-
Yeah, consultant fee, fine.
A move we accept.
Um, can I just ask, I'd like to ask-
Let me get a second before we have discussion.
Okay.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can have discussion.
So is this a standard, it just seems kind of low for such a huge project? Is that a standard fee, or?
There are no standard fees. What I did was an analysis of the surrounding towns in the southeast region of the state. They range from $125 per project to $15,000 per project. Many towns don't have fees listed, so there, it's at your discretion. This is kind of a middle-of-the-road fee. It's common that there be a base plus an increment, so the larger projects, the per-unit cost obviously becomes more expensive, because there's generally more time involved in those reviews. But this, this would be, can, you know, you'd be comparable to your neighbors.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We have the letter, I guess, that's going off to Mass Housing relative to the Chapter 40B project. Everyone should have had a chance to review it. If, I guess we're trying to get some opinion from the board as to whether they're comfortable having that sent off.
I'm comfortable.
Um, I-
Thank you.
I'm still waiting to hear back myself from some of the neighbors, to see if they had anything that, any concerns that they wanted to add that may not be in there, but if you don't hear anything from me by the time it's due, the 19th?
Yes.
So you have to mail it tomorrow.
And I think when we talked before, is the neighbors will have their opportunity in front of the ZBA.
Okay.
But this was more of a professional letter written by the, by staff, and Marlene did, did poll the rest of the staff and just provide a technical review at this time.
Okay.
So it's a technical letter from the town.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'll move that we go ahead and send the letter as is.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?